To the Monday, November 29th, meeting of the Select Board. It's a struggle to get through the, uh, the date. If I could start with a call to, or a roll call for attendance?
Mantra, 353 Creighton Road.
Bailey, Chisels Drive.
Andy Knapp, Wednesday Point Road, and Jim?
Sakosha, 21 James Henry Drive. I am at my home currently, and there is nobody here that will influence my vote.
All right. If everyone could please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Review of agenda and approval. Is there anybody that has any motions, changes, recommendations?
Motion to approve.
I will second that motion. Roll call vote.
Mantra, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
And Napa, aye. All right. Public comments. The first of two public comments. I will open public comment at this time.
If there's anybody that would like to wager a public comment remotely, you can raise your hand if you're in the Teams program, or enter a comment in the chat feature, or if you're on your phone, you can press star six to unmute yourself, speak up, wait to be recognized by the chair. There'll be an additional public comment towards the end of the meeting as well.
Give it just a few more seconds. All right, seeing nothing coming through, at this time I will close public comment. We have no public hearings. The consent agenda, we have the meeting minutes from November 8th, November 15th, the previously submitted signed requests for signatures, and any new requests for signatures. Looking for a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Aye.
George, aye.
Jim?
Sakosha, aye.
Napa, aye. We'll just let the board know we now resold or sold back our fourth tax-deeded property. You'll remember we deeded, tax-deeded seven, so always the back outcome when it ends back, ends up back with the former owner. That included one that was on the consent agenda tonight that you're signing deeds for, so good news.
Great. Appointments, 2022 budget presentations, planning, and land use.
Okay.
Are you presenting the planning, Connor?
I will, and John's here. If you have questions that I can't answer, it's pretty straightforward, as you're well aware. The one item that's different than last year, but not different than years prior, is we added back in the money for consultants to hire Stratford Regional Planning Commission to do an update on the future land use chapter of the master plan. We were in a good schedule of updating a chapter every year. Last year, we took a year off, in part because the prior year's chapter wasn't wrapped up by the end of the year. That was the Facilities and Utilities chapter. So anyways, we've already been in contact with Stratford Regional Planning. They are prepared to take on the task with the goal to complete it by the end of the year, likely sooner, and that's the, um, the addition that you see in consultants.
Any questions from the board?
I have none, sir.
Negative.
Anything you want to add?
No, thank you.
All right. Buildings.
John, if you want to just toggle the camera on when you sit down. Get you in prime time here. It takes a second, so just wait for it. Yep, good.
Well, mine's going to be almost shut and sweet as gone. Um, the only thing that really, that's any change this year is going over on our mileage because we had an issue with the vehicle. The money that we would have spent doing the vehicle is going to make it a wash. Actually, it might even come out a little bit ahead. The, I didn't change the total budget at the end, even though this happened this year, because I'm assuming next year we'll be back on our regular schedule and having the other vehicle. I did reach out, um, three or four times, I think two weeks ago was the last time, and they said they are making the Equinox again now, and it's back up. And I contacted the person that was the next highest and asked if that price was still held, and I haven't heard back from them yet. Because supposedly, we're still going to get it for the price that was quoted, but I'm kind of holding my breath with a new model yet, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
And everything else going on. Um, the only other thing is, oh, the overtime. I'm in good shape right now, but it looks like we might end up going over a couple hundred bucks, and that's because of the time that I'm helping out with land use for the few extra hours. And I didn't bother changing that line because I think that that number's still a good number to carry forward. Everything else is basically status quo across as we normally do. The only other thing that I might mention is our building permit fees. We had a slight increase last year, but the cost of, um, building has gone up so much, and it's based on a price per thousand. So we're collecting quite a bit more money than we anticipated, so I didn't bother doing an analysis like I normally do every year to see where we're at because we've already collected more and we're still getting more money coming in than we normally do. We're a little bit behind last year, so I think next year we'll take a second look at it just to make sure that everything's still good.
Any questions? Go ahead, Jim.
Just saying, thanks for all you do, John.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
Yes, I, on my own, I'd need to know an update on legal. What, how does the legal work for John? I mean, this, for, uh, work that we have a dollar, we carry a dollar.
Yeah, I actually use the town budget for legal. We just carry a dollar. We used to have separate lines, and that got changed.
Right.
Six, seven years ago, I think, or maybe eight years ago. It was quite a few years ago. It's changed it.
Thank you very much. That's all I had there.
Is there anything from the Advisory Budget Committee? Yeah, I read the, your, uh, write-up and from your, uh, minutes. Seemed pretty, pretty light this time. You see, there's all kinds of questions.
I'm one of the small, easy budgets. I'm not like some of the other you guys got. And I'm not trying to add another employee. Well, maybe we should. Now, we got extra revenue coming in.
Oh, boy.
Too late.
Yep.
We all know we'll have to replace John with two people, so you heard it here first.
Yeah.
Good, thank you, John.
John, would you toggle the camera back off? Thank you.
I think John said he was working forever.
That's probably what he said, but last time I saw Cheryl, she, she, she wants that house finished and to move into it. She'd like to see retirement.
Oh, that's why I'm working on my house this week. But it doesn't just happen to be my budget, and now I'm planning for.
Right.
There's some stuff, so even though.
I have to send Barbara a note. I will not be on for tomorrow's meeting. So, um, I didn't realize when I sat here agreeing to it that, um, I had already pre-committed myself to, uh, concert with my wife tomorrow evening. Um, unfortunate. I was going to say, and unfortunately for you folks, I like her more than, uh, than I do the planning board. Yeah. I don't want to have to have that to, like, conversation over who gets what on divorce again, like, we don't want to do that. So, we've joked about that once before. You know, all joking. Um, yeah, I know. All right, um, staff reports.
Thank you. Um, the only thing that I have to add is today was the due date for our one-ton truck and equipment packages. They were advertised separately, as you know. The, uh, we received two bids for the equipment. Uh, Mark is reviewing those, and we'll make a recommendation for an upcoming, upcoming meeting. We received zero bids for one ton. Um, and so Mark had three dealerships, uh, or two dealerships that he had talked to that said that they would be submitting, and he talked to others. Uh, so he called one of them today who said, oh, well, I sent it. It should be, you should have gotten it. Um, regardless, I'm recommending extending the bid deadline to December 29th for the one-ton package, uh, and I would just do that since we were meeting tonight. I'd be, I'd welcome any objection from board members, but that's the plan to, to extend re-advertise or extend the advertisement and have them do the 29th.
Um, I'm in support of extending it since we have nothing. Does the rest of the board agree?
Great.
So you have consensus from the board to extend it.
Perfect. So that's what we'll do. If you know anybody that's in the, um, that deals in one-ton trucks, uh, send them March by. Be glad to talk to them.
Sure.
Yeah.
I may know a couple people.
All right, ideal.
There we go. Uh, Municipal Office Administrator call.
I have a few additional signature requests from what's on the report. Three land use change tax bills that came in today, those are the question, they're going down the line right now. Three administrative abatements, they're going to be next office, stockton packet, and a supplemental warrant to issue a second tax bill for the property.
All right. Old business, the Fire EMS radio tower communication line.
So this was pretty straightforward. Um, details are in my report. Uh, we, we knew from the beginning, this was probably one of the biggest pieces early on, knew, uh, need to be upgraded. Um, this is the four-wire copper line connection that goes from our repeater, uh, right next door, uh, down to UNH Dispatch. So what we didn't know is exactly how, uh, we would improve that connection. So, uh, we continue to, to prepare for a future microwave connection, and that's really the way of the future. But we're years out from being able to accomplish that, um, in this dispatch district and at that location. So what we're recommenda- recommending in, with the support of our radio communications consultant, is a line, an N-N fiber connection from the Ramsdale Lane Tower to, uh, UNH Dispatch. Uh, we talked to the three, uh, primary data, um, companies in the area, Atlantic Broadband, First Light, and Consolidated. Uh, First Light had a significant infrastructure cost associated with connecting the points. They just didn't have infrastructure close enough. Atlantic Broadband is just entering Durham, so they don't, uh, their timeline doesn't really fit what we're looking for. Consolidated, uh, is what I would say very reasonable. Um, they gave us a few options, um, but the option that was the lowest overall cost was, uh, paying $10,000 for the infrastructure costs upfront, and then $309 a month for a five-year contract, uh, which it would include a non-appropriation clause. Uh, so that's what I'm recommending, and use the $10,000 from, um, the building maintenance line in the 2021 budget.
So, let me inquire more about the, uh, microwave system. So we have a price for it, but we're saying we'll do it farther down the line. Can somebody?
Yep.
Kind of elaborate on why, or what, what's the basis on that?
So the, the bene- the true benefit of a microwave system comes from, uh, the redundancy and the network that it creates, the wireless network that it creates between points and among points. And so if we stood up a microwave connection between, um, the Barrington repeater site and UNH Dispatch, that would be one connection, and Barrington would own all of the infrastructure and pay to install all of the infrastructure. The, what is more likely to happen in the future, uh, but the rest of the district, the communication district, isn't prepared for at this point, is to have microwave installed on each repeater at each site in the district in a ring, so we have the redundancy and the communication among all of the, the sites and dispatch as the, the home unit. So then the infrastructure costs would be shared. The problem is the, um, communication district has higher priorities than a microwave connection right now. There's, um, tower equipment, uh, in UNH Dispatch that needs to be replaced. There's a repeater that needs to be added. Our repeater needs to be replaced. The repeater, um, in Durham needs to be replaced. So the timing has more to do with priorities for the district than it does, uh, the ability to get it and get it done. Uh, but it's not an efficient way, uh, to do microwave, to just do one connection if Barrington's the only one that has money and is ready to do it.
So, it's just, when I look at the consolidated option, you're spending 28.5 to accomplish that, and then to come back down the road to spend 36.5, five years down the road, it starts getting into where's the leverage of our money?
So the part of the pro- part of the, uh, additional cost of microwave is we would have an annual maintenance cost. We would own that equipment, and we'd have the lifecycle replacement of the hardware. Uh, it's likely that when we do go microwave, we will probably want to keep the data connection intact for redundancy. Uh, and so I don't think it's, uh, I mean, I don't think we want to own a data connection between, um, UNH and our tower. Uh, I don't mean, we don't deal in data infrastructure. Um, and so I think leasing is our best option to have a connection like that.
And with the five-year non-appropriation clause, um, that we're writing it up so that based on approval of budget, we have the opt-out, which is never going to happen in all reality of the budget because it's lumped into the general part of the budget, and even if it's on the prior year budget, it's still going to be fine.
Yeah, so a non-appropriation clause has, has, uh, more to do with voters making a decision which doesn't allow you to spend the money than the availability of money. So, you know, if, if the town entered a contract that was $100,000 a year for X, and voters at town meeting petitioned an article that says, we don't want you spending any money towards this or to this vendor, or something like that, because they were really peeved about something. The non-appropriation clause would make sure that the municipality didn't have any future liability. The, because SB2 community has a bottom-line budget, the Select Board could always reprioritize funds, and even if, you know, the, through the budget process, the money was taken out for a specific purpose, right after the budget's passed, it passed as one number, $7.3 million, and the Select Board could say, no, we still, we still want to spend money on this. So I think that was your first point, but a non-appropriation clause is important, and it's, it's required to make an agreement.
It, it's just our opt-out, but it's not something that we're ever really going to be able, like, even from a legal standpoint, it would be a fight to execute on because of you're appropriating based on a solid budget number.
Yeah, I mean, it happens. Never say never.
Somebody's got to have a real kind of, to make that happen. Okay.
Thank Dan and had a question.
Yes.
No, you answered the question. Thank you.
Just see if there are any other comments from the board.
Thank you. Answered the question.
Select person Sakosha, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Well, when it comes to maintenance, a lease is awful nice. You know what I mean?
All right. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to authorize entering contract consolidations to install a fiber in Fire EMS repeater in the dispatch center. $10,000, three, zero, nine, come on, five-year appropriation clause.
Roll call vote.
Mantra, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Jim?
Sakosha, aye.
Napa, even though I don't like saddling future boards with contracts. No, I'm still pretty reluctant.
I know you are.
I don't like doing stuff like this.
Um, well, it'll be, uh, closer to immediate improvement for, um, that critical communication infrastructure, so we appreciate it.
Um, wouldn't have mattered either had three anyway, even if I voted no. All Veterans Credit Petition Warren Article. Um, so apparently, the gentleman who put in this past year submitted a petition for the full amount. Your recommendation is to pull the board's Warren Article?
Yep, so I talked to, um, Mr. Ascani.
Yes.
Um, and so he, he wasn't thinking that the board would sponsor an article this year. Um, we, we didn't touch base, so he wasn't aware. Um, he didn't want to have to go through the process of doing a petition to Warren Article in next year, so he figured, I'll just do it to the full 750. When I told him that the board had already voted to bring it, to sit, bring an article forward, to bring it to 650, um, he was very appreciative and, and glad, and he said, that's what I wanted to do from the beginning anyways. Um, and I asked him, I said, would you support the Select Board amending the article at deliberative session, or trying to amend the article at deliberative session, to bring it to 650 in line with the original discussion, uh, to do 100 a year for three years? And he said, yes, absolutely, as long as the goal is still to get to the 750. Now, that doesn't carry any weight. He's just a petitioner. Um, he's the primary petitioner, so I thought it was important to talk to him. Um, but that was something that he was supportive of. Um, and so my recommendation to pull the article is to avoid having two articles on the same subject matter. Uh, again, I think it's confusing for voters. And regardless, even if the Select Board kept its article and tried to amend his article, you're, it's still going to depend on the will of the people sitting in the room on deliberative session. And so I would rather have less confusion for voters. Select Board pull its article, prepare an amendment, sharing that it's with the support of the petitioner, like we did last year, uh, the primary petitioner, to amend that article from 750 to 650, um, and clean up the language a little bit. And so that's what I recommend, and, uh, based on my conversation with Mr. Ascani, he supports that as well. Okay.
I move with the board sponsored All Veterans Credit Warren Article, care and amendment to be introduced at deliberative session to reduce the petitioned article from 750 to 650.
Do you not second any motion?
Well, I could. I second the motion for discussion.
Um, I'd open it up for discussion, um, and also the Advisory Budget Committee, since it's a Warren Article, I think should participate as well if appropriate.
Yes, we'll note from their, their minutes if they did discuss it.
I, I saw that. That's why I wanted to make sure I invited them in to participate on. Um, I agree with the idea of amending it down, and my only concern is we get there in the room, and suddenly the, the will of the people in the room do not represent the will of the voters as a whole, and, um, we, we end up with a conflict where it may be confusing with the two articles on there, but at least it drives the fact that we're in support of it, and even if it gets amended, and they're both for 650, and they both get voted on, approved, it still accomplishes the same thing as my general sense on it.
Yeah, so if the will of the people at deliberative session wanted to keep it at 750, and the board kept the board-sponsored article, they could just the same increase the board-sponsored article to 750. And so both articles that the voters were presented with would both be 750. So, I mean, I think at the end of the day, it's, it's going to depend on the will of the people at deliberative session. Uh, I think the Select Board made a compelling argument last year and the year prior, really. You'll remember the, um, two years ago, uh, the board sponsored an article to increase the all, or the Service Connected to Disability Credit. And there is a petitioned article to bring it to, um, 4,000. This, the Select Board introduced an amendment and, you know, was successfully able to convince the folks, um, in the room at deliberative session. Last year, there was the two articles, and the Select Board introduced an article to clean up the language and adjust the petitioned article, um, and was successful. So I think, you know, the responsibility will be on the Select Board to articulate the reasoning.
Yep.
Uh, in, in this case, I think there's good historical justification.
Yep. Select person Mantra.
Well, I personally would rather not, since it involves me, it would be nicer, me personally, with the petitioned article as opposed to Select Board putting, putting forward.
Well, we have a motion in a second. We might as well vote on it.
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Select person Sakosha. All right. Napa, aye.
Also, Dan, and it's, uh, it's a little hard to hear you over the internets.
Sorry.
I'll shout.
Oh, good. Well, just, I have figured for the other people listening, too.
Is that better?
That's perfect.
Um, new business, Warren Articles for 2022. Yes, so two Warren Articles that I'd like the board to consider sponsoring. Uh, the Advisory Budget Committee reviewed both last week and supports both of them. The first one, um, the Fire, uh, for Fire and Ambulance Services Revolving Fund. So RSA 31:95 dash, dash H established the ability for municipal to create a revolving fund, which is simply appropriations that don't expire at the end of the year, uh, for the provisions of operating an ambulance service. Um, what they realized a few years ago is that it's pretty uncommon for a municipal ambulance service to not be attached at the hip to the fire department, and it creates, um, um, challenges for administering the revolving fund for chiefs to split hairs of, wait, is this a fire expense or an ambulance expense? So they amended the statute to, um, say, fire and ambulance services instead of just ambulance services. Uh, when we established the revolving fund in Barrington, it was established as ambulance services. Um, so we're proposing, uh, the addition of an article to add fire, um, to the fire, or to the ambulance revol- services revolving fund to expand the purpose and maintain consistency with state law.
Mr. Bailey?
I'd like to take a motion to include a Warren Article, spanning the purpose of the ambulance revolving fund to include fire on the 2022 one.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mantra, aye.
Sorry, discussion, any other discussion? During non-roll call vote.
Mantra, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Napa, aye.
Okay, Cemetery Expendable Trust Fund. So by accident, I happened upon a statute, which is 289:2-a, uh, which allows the creation of a cemetery expendable trust fund, which allows the cemetery lot sale revenue to automatically be deposited into it without a separate act by, uh, town meeting. So in Barrington, for years, the town has collected as general revenue, the cemetery revenue, and then a town meeting voted, uh, to add it to a pre-existing capital reserve for maintenance and expansion of the cemetery. And so that requires us a Warren Article every single year, adding money to that cemetery capital reserve. This would allow us to make one decision, have the funds automatically go into, uh, the newly created Cemetery Expendable Trust Fund for the same purpose, uh, and it would be automatic. We wouldn't have to, um, track it the same, add it to the Warren Article list. The one thing that's, that's a, a little bit wonky about it, um, which I don't recommend further confusing voters by cleaning up this year, but then we'll have the capital reserve account with a
Have to be closed out.
Standing balance. It won't have to be closed out. We can leave it there and just have the additional funding source. At some point in the future, we might want to consolidate them, um, to clean things up, but I, I wouldn't, um, recommend doing that this year. So I'd like to, um, ask the board to sponsor an article, um, pursuant to 289:2-a, um, to establish the cemetery expendable trust.
Hold on one second. Go ahead. I just want the board to, any comment here before we invite the head of the Cemetery Trust Fund up to?
So it's not advisable when you said, put it in, put both, both changes under one Warren Article. Is that my understanding?
I would not recommend it for.
That's all. Thank you. Yep, sorry.
No, that's okay. I want to make sure you get any questions answered. Um, Rick, if you would, please grab the microphone.
If you just hit the camera icon, it takes a second, so. Don't do it again.
Just for the purpose of clarification, a number of years ago, the money was just put into, it was, once the sales were put into that, and what we found out was inadvertently, we hadn't done it properly. It was just something that the town did, and we found out we couldn't do it that way. So that's where we went, the Warren Article route, and now Connors found that by the will of the voters, you could do this. So it would be just, they would eliminate, if the voters approved this, it will, what it'll do is eliminate a Warren Article. every year from getting there. And again, the selectmen are the only ones that can expend funds out of that. So it would still be controlled by the town fathers.
Thank you. Looking for a motion.
Move to include a warrant article establishing cemetery expendable trust fund per RSA 289 colon 2 dash 1 on the 2022 warrant.
I second it. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Bailey, aye.
Napa, aye. Select board reports.
Uh, I guess I'm next.
You are.
Yes. You see the minutes from the Advisor Budget Committee, School Board, neither did the Transfer Station Committee, School Board meets tomorrow.
Select person Bailey.
Thank you very much. Report on the library. We have upcoming events. The library has a December, yes, December 1st, they have a reading challenge, read a book from the group that you haven't explored much of and report back to them. There is a friends meeting on the 1st of December. 6th of December, there's the paper bag stars, teens and adults are invited. And then on the 15th, it's history admission. The mystery, there's a genealogy starter guy that's going to be there for that to be there. And also on the 4th, they have the Polar Express again, and that's going to be from 12 to 2 o'clock. I would encourage everybody that is interested to go quick. The only one other comment I have just to make it known to the board by reception was not quite acceptable to me halfway through the meeting. And that's all I will say because people were questioning why I voted the way I did vote in the last meeting for the warrant article. And so that's, that's where all I will say, but just want to make the board aware of. We'll have that.
Thank you. Select person Sakosha.
All right. So for the rec on this Saturday from 12 to 2, there is the Polar Express event. There is no pre-registration required. Also, end of the year program reviews, and we are hiring for a middle school site supervisor. So if you know anybody, spread the word. But that's what we get going on at the rec.
Select person Air just joined us. We're doing select persons reports.
Conservation hasn't met yet. And the town lands, email's going back. Con's been hard at work on RF2 or P. So that's ready to go off soon. The board's gonna look at it.
Planning Board meets tomorrow to go over warrant article items. As I had commented on before the meeting started, I will not be at tomorrow's Planning Board meeting. I already had prior commitments. That was it. We haven't had any other, any other meetings, surprisingly, in the last, well, it's been the holidays. So not surprising. That's all I have. Final, oh, one thing I did want to bring up that I noted to share with the board. So I was looking at the information that had come out from the library, and there was it was a comment on new memberships. And it also happened to coincide with the time where the ECLC is they're registering all the new students from the ECLC. So that helped me understand and explain where a good portion of the new enrollments and memberships are coming from. So I I thought it was interesting because we always talk about, one of the things that I was here is like, how, how many people have signed up for new memberships? Well, they bring all the kids from the school over and enroll them to get their membership. So you take the kindergarten class, there's 110 or 112 new enrollments for library cards right off the bat. So same thing with pre-K or any of the other programs that they do, which I I fully support the idea of doing it. But I just want to make sure that we're mindful of how it skews or the impression it creates around the numbers. That was all that I had. That's it.
Final public comment? Participating virtually.
Oh, sorry. It's I saw Jim beep in here. So never mind, though.
Oh, I know. He did his, well, I mean, he can speak out of public comment, too. If you want to offer a public comment, virtually raise hand or enter a comment into the chat feature. And if you're on your phone, press star six, speak up, wait to be recognized by the chair.
I believe we, the illustrious Chief Walker, sitting in the hot seat.
He might not be here, Chief Walker. He could be here. Tricentennial Chair or Cemetery Trustee Chair or president of Green Hill Road.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
It's Rick Walker.
Barrington's most interesting man.
All the lot of things, but I don't know if interesting is one of them. This is about the tricentennial. We're excited about the fact that we've just come out with a calendar of old pictures in town. Very nice gift. It'll be a keepsake. 20 bucks, they're available. Still have ornaments. We have number plates. They're going, everything's going well. T-shirt. So people are looking for Christmas gifts. I'll throw in a plug for that. But more importantly is, in January, we're going to do a snow sculptor type contest. Hopefully, it'll snow. I know the road agent said that we weren't going to get any picture, but I'll hope he's wrong. But for the month of January, we're going to do a snow sculptor contest. You'll take a photo of your family type event of your snow sculptor. It'll have some type of a 300th anniversary theme to it. And then by people's vote, people's choice, people's, whoever is the whoever the people's choice award is, will get a get some kind of a gift. We're not sure. Probably have some 300th anniversary swag or a gift certificate. So, you know, hopefully, that'll get, that's going to get the year off started. And then in February, we're going to move right into working with the rec department for the skating party. And and we're going to continue on. We're getting excited. We're a month away from the anniversary. So that's where we're at. Any questions?
Select person Air.
That chalet or whatever they do down in Kales.
Yep. Yes. So at the the soiree is this is this Friday night down at the intersection. That's always, they took a year off last year because of the pandemic, but they're back at it. That's a pretty exciting thing. It garners a lot of people between the intersection and Christmas Dove. We'll have a fire truck down there, lighten the area and a fire set up for people to come toast marshmallows. And we will be, we'll have a booth set up in the area of Christmas Dove to have some of that stuff available.
Select person Bailey.
Thank you, Jake. I hope you will verify some of those pictures. So some adversity fall out of the book and mailed to you.
Yeah, the kind of, kind of the interesting thing is with the pictures, and I know my three minutes is getting by, but some of the interesting things, one of the things we're going to try to do is some of the old pictures, working with the Historical Society. Obviously, we want to get them into the town report. And the other thing is, is we hope to get a photo display set up so that we can get a picture, we can take one of the old pictures from the 40s or the 30s or whatever, and then take a picture of that general area today. So people would understand. We had a lot of questions about where the train station actually was and stuff. So we're excited about that. We're going to do a cemetery walk in July. We're going to partner with the Historical Society and do a history day. So a lot of big things coming.
No offense, a cemetery walk should be in October. That's just a missed opportunity.
My question pertains to the snow sculpture. Make sure that somebody doesn't inadvertently send you an older photo of something they did.
Well, I think.
Where do you know from?
That's right. Because Mark says there won't be any, we're not, it's not going to be, it's, we're not putting like above $500 thing, you know, you'll be lucky to get a $20 gift certificate on it. So if somebody wants to cheat with a picture, well.
Are they going down the safety building and the lawn or something too?
I'm sorry.
Is someone going to do on the safety building on the lawn, do a sculpture?
You ever seen me do a sculpture? Might have.
I'm not gonna lie, I got a little nervous. I got nervous right in the beginning when you started to, and anytime you get a fireman up there talking about a calendar, it's nothing.
Well, he sent the really old photo, so I wonder how many of those photos he's in.
We did, Joel hasn't seen the calendar yet, but we snuck his birthday in there in November. So he'll, he'll be upset with us. We just thought it was.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So again, last call. If you're participating virtually, you can raise your virtual hand or enter a comment into the chat feature.
All right, seeing no public comments, I will close public comment at this time. And we don't have any, we don't have a non-public this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion. Roll call vote.
Eric, aye. Patrick, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Sakosha, aye.
Napa, aye. Everyone have a good evening. Thank you.